Served as a youth pastor for nine years and senior pastor for eighteen and as a religious magazine editor for nine years. The Interfaith Council started out about thirty years ago as the National Conference of Christians and Jews and then evolved into the Interfaith Council fifteen years ago. Last year, the council coordinated Muslim, Jewish, and Christian congregations to work together to complete the construction of a Habitat for Humanity House in Altamont Springs called Harmony House. Mr. Coffin wishes to express his appreciation for the city's willingness to work with the council on programs and projects to improve the community such as the screening of Martin Luther King Jr.'s "I Have a Dream" speech here at City Hall in August of this year. After the invocation, we'll be led in the Fledge of Allegiance today by District Two, Tony Ortiz. And if you would all join me in standing, please.
I invite you to join me in a moment of reflection. We are gathered here today because humans everywhere recognize that many aspects of a community are best addressed collectively. That's what government is all about, and that's why the Orlando City Council exists. But good government doesn't just happen, it takes effort. It requires the commitment of its leaders to fairness, to justice, to equality, and to a long list of other crucial social and moral values. Good government requires civil dialogue and consultation, leader with leader, citizen with citizen, leader with citizen. It requires a willingness to speak forthrightly and an even greater willingness to listen. The issues you as a council address are complex, the challenges you face are daunting. The requirements of time and energy are great, but the potential to improve the quality of life for all in this community makes it worthwhile. May this be foremost in your minds, not only in today's deliberations, but every day as you seek to live a life of service. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Let's call a meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll with the termination of Quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray.
Commissioner Ortiz.
UCF.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
UCF squared.
Commissioner Lyman.
Here.
Commissioner Ings.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. How about if we take up for consideration the agenda review and city council meeting minutes from November the twentieth, 2013? Motion by Commissioner Ortiz.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
And so, motion carries. Wow, we have no presentations or awards or recognitions today, so we will go right into the mayor's update. And I want to wish our District Six Commissioner a happy birthday. He's celebrating his some number of birthdays this Friday, the thirteenth, as it turns out.
Aye.
So how about we congratulate the Commissioner, hope he has a great day, and let's do a little singing. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you. All right.
Thank you.
How old are you now?
Twenty.
I didn't hear Robert's.
How old are you?
Twenty-one in county.
I know.
Twenty-one in county.
You're just not the oldest one anymore, you're just making it up now.
Yesterday.
Chief Miller's not here though.
Chief Miller's not here. Past happy birthday remarks on to Chief Miller when he returns as well, which last Sunday is his fortieth as well. Ed, do you have some pictures you're gonna run? The pictures that you're gonna see are from the dedication of the Kevin R. Tyuski Park last Tuesday. I think most of the commissioners were there. Commissioner Lyman and I unveiled a new sign, as you can see in those pictures. It's an urban pocket park that's located adjacent to downtown's newest residential tower, the Sky House, which we celebrated that opening day as well, and it's obviously named in honor of our late planner, Kevin Tyuski, is a wonderful celebration and tribute. Thank you, Ed. I'd like to take just a minute and recognize and honor Nelson Mandela, South Africa's first black president, who passed away last week. It is with deep sadness that we mourn the death of former President Mandela, and he was an inspiration, I know, to all of us and millions as an activist and a peacemaker. So we honor him for his vision and his commitment to freedom and justice. And Commissioner Ortiz and Commissioner Sheehan have already kinda touched on it, but I want to congratulate our University of Central Florida Knights who completed an eleven-and-one season, undefeated in the conference, took the American Athletic Conference title along with the automatic BCS berth, and will be playing the Baylor Bears in the Fiesta Bowl on January the first. So congratulation, UCF Knights. On today's agenda, we have an ops item which will expand the bereavement leave to include employees' domestic partners' grandchildren. I want to recognize Commissioner Sheehan for her leadership on this issue, and I'm so proud of the efforts that this city makes as a community to be more inclusive to everybody, regardless of race, religion, and sexual orientation. And not only is it the right thing to do, but it's also important to us as we grow our city and grow it in a manner that encourages all types of people to come here for economic development reasons. On today's agenda also is a funding agreement with Osceola County for their participation in the construction of the MLS soccer stadium here in Orlando. I want to recognize Osceola County Commission, Seminole County Commission, and Orange County Commission. It's great that we can build a facility that allows us to bring MLS to Orlando, but it just reminds us of what we can do if we work together as a region. And then finally, I just want to mention that we're approving a QTI for Phase Two of Travel Click's relocation and expansion in the city of Orlando, which will create another hundred and fifty additional jobs, which brings the total to four hundred high-wage, high-value jobs in the Paramore community by 2016. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of items acted on through a single vote of council. We give each of the council members an opportunity to comment on items of significance to them on the consent agenda and also to generally update you on items of significance from their district. We rotate the order that we go in, so today it is Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna keep it really simple to kinda mimic Commissioner Gray's style, but I have to say, congratulations, UCF. We are so proud. That's my alma mater too, so, and I'm ever so proud of saying it out loud. So congratulations, and on top of that, the bowl we're playing on is the Fiesta Bowl with a Spanish name, so what can I say? We're celebrating all around. So congratulations once again. I know we have another city council, but I just want to remind people, this is the holidays, it's time for a lot of thinking about our families, our friends, and the good things that we have enjoyed through life, and also be very careful out there, right? It's also the season when those guys who believe that they own property that doesn't belong to them wanna make themselves, I guess, richer in some way. Not so much rich wants to get caught, but please be very careful with your vehicles, don't leave stuff laying around when you go shopping, and please be careful and cognizance of your kids when you go to shopping centers during the festivities. Safety, 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 collaboration and communication, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ortiz. Commissioner Stewart. Thank you, Mayor, and let me say thank you to all those who were involved in Holiday on the Drive last week. It was a wonderful time. If you, it depends on who you ask, they'll tell you there's as many as ten or twelve-thousand people were there, but I think it's probably two or three thousand. But that's a lot for what we did, and it's a great way for us to build community and get a little shopping in on a local basis as well, so really excited about that. Want to mention the Sweat Facade Grant. Thank y'all for the work that you're doing over there, I appreciate that. That's another great business in the College Park area, so appreciate what you're doing. Also want to mention that we had a cleanup on Saturday in the Rosemere area. Some of y'all remember, Commissioners, Rosemere was the area that we did the calendar on, that was that little area there. And we have begun working on a couple of projects over there to try to shore up some of the zoning around it to make sure we protect that neighborhood. And thanks to Jason Burton and Mary Stuart Dresch, I appreciate all the work that they have done. But what came out of that meeting was they wanted to kinda do a cleanup and kinda clean up the neighborhood, so we organized that this past week, and I appreciate Jody and Jan, Jody Vass and Jan Rayhill doing the work on that. Couple of quick announcements. Coming up on this Saturday is the Baldwin Park Annual Holiday Parade at the Village Center, starts at six o'clock. Audubon Park Garden District is doing a special bike ride to benefit the Paramore Kids Zone at Meet at Bikes, Beans, and Bordeaux at seven o'clock that same evening. And then we'll mention one brief thing for everybody who hasn't had a chance to look at it, got a chance to go over Saturday to the Lou Gardens and look at the Holiday House. It is spectacular as always, and I appreciate Robert Baden and the work that he does over there. But if you haven't got a chance and you just wanna enjoy this gorgeous weather that we're enjoying, unlike the rest of the country, please get out there for the next few days, and you'll enjoy a wonderful amenity in our city. Mayor, let me also congratulate you on the work on G1, on the Osceola Agreement. It reminds me less of the magic and more of Sunrail, which was kind of a nice thing about Sunrail, that all of us came together as partners knowing how important that was to our community. And I think that the idea of Seminole and Osceola understanding the long-term impact of youth sports and how that has been perpetuated or encouraged by the Orlando City Soccer is just a real testament to our community coming together and your leadership, so thank you very much for doing that. And that's, besides turning sixty and knowing how old Sam Ings actually is, thank you for the birthday wishes from everybody, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Seems like everybody's had a birthday here in about the last month or so. Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you, Mayor. I got the privilege of lighting the Christmas tree at Lake Yola, and you have some pictures of that? So we lit the Christmas tree, and it was a great addition to Lake Yola Park, and I have to tell you, it was much better than the dead tree with the squirrels attacking it and the vandalism problems we had with the tree last year. The tree is absolutely beautiful, ten thousand LED lights, and it just really, really was spectacular, so it was a wonderful celebration. We missed you, Mayor, but we had a really good time lighting the Lake Yola Christmas tree. Trinity Lutheran Church was there and did their celebration and singing, and they were wonderful, and want to thank the Downtown Development Board for their sponsorship as well. And the fountain was decked out for Christmas too, which was beautiful. And I want to thank Chris Wallace, he just really did a great job getting the park decorated. But we also had tree lightings in downtown south, Lake Colma and La Sona, Lake La Sona, as well as the historic Washington Street Bridge. So I've been doing a lot of lighting things, but it's been fun, and there's a lot of great celebrations happening all over town. It's wonderful to see these happenings with the neighborhoods and the main streets as well. And the Lake Yola Christmas Parade will be next Saturday at 6:00 PM, so if you want to come out and see a nice little Christmas parade, we're gonna be decked out with our battery-powered lights. I'll be riding my Vespa, so if y'all want to come out and enjoy that, that'll be a lot of fun. And over the weekend, I did run the OUC Half Marathon with my assistant Bill. We're doing our part to stay off the medications, so we're doing our part for health, and we did about ten minutes better in our time, so I want to thank Bill for getting me, challenging me to do that, and I'm down thirty pounds now, so it's been a great, been a great thing to be able to actually finish a half marathon and actually run across the finish line this time, instead of drag myself across. On the agenda today, on A5 Human Resources, this makes the bereavement leave policies consistent across the board for domestic partners. This was a problem because unfortunately, when we added domestic partners, we only added certain protections and certain, you know, spouses and things like that, but we didn't recognize grandchildren, children, parents, and the policies are very inconsistent. So now Policy 808.6A is consistent for domestic partners and spouses, so I think that just made it fair, and I want to thank the legal department for helping me with that, as well as Deborah Gerard. And I also want to thank Sergeant Rhonda Childers for pointing it out, and Wayne Bernofsky with the Fire Department, he did a great job getting us the information for what other departments are doing, you know, to make sure that we were consistent. Also on the agenda today, Item D1, the fee waiver for Sunday Yola Market, it's been doing great over at Lake Yola Park, so we certainly want to continue that, and that's all I had on the agenda today, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheehan. Commissioner Lyman.
Just a few announcements I'd like to announce tonight. We are having our second night of All You Need to Know about Affordable, the Affordable Care Act, also called Obamacare. Commissioner Ings and I partnered together with the Navigators and someone from the Department of, I think, Health Services will be out at the Smith Center. We were at Jackson last time, so people want any information, you can see these signs around, you may have gotten them in the mail, but it's real, real important to come out and get your questions answered. Also, I had the great honor this past week, working with or being present for Claire and the Chocolate Nutcracker. The Chocolate Nutcracker has gotten so much better through the years. It was phenomenally performed, excerpts of it at the Science Center with Beverly Page, Mayor Ernest Page's wife, and worked together on this, and drew national attention. The president of Delta Sigma Theta, my sorority of almost fifty years, was here, along with other members of Delta from across the country, every region was represented. And I just want to compliment Mr. and Mrs. Page on a great job. And this weekend, I believe, are the performances, is it this weekend or next weekend? It's coming up this week, this week at Bob Carr. You've got to see the ballet, you've gotta see the dance, it is phenomenal, it is great. Also on Saturday, we had a benefit tennis tournament, Typhoon Hayden from the Philippines to raise dollars to help those survivors, Charles Williams, and sponsored it. That tournament had so many handicaps, I had to leave, I couldn't even remember them all. But it was great to see so many people, I was telling Rodney, at the tennis center again, just loads of people playing tennis from everywhere. So Mayor, we were bragging about those clay courts over at Sky House, which we had the opening last week, and I'm telling you, it is just phenomenal. Of course, I enjoyed the dedication of Kevin's Tyuski's Park at Sky House. And of course, the tour with Mayor Dyer for the Performing Arts Center. And we're gonna do something special, Mayor, and maybe, the minister was right there, I was trying to get Reggie to get his name, but I think you have it, to have all the ministers in the community come and bless the Dr. Phillips Performing Arts Center just after Martin Luther King Celebration activities, so we can kinda piggyback on those activities that we have with all the ministers. And I'll update you on that some more. The Paramore Christmas Party that OPD and I normally go with them every year to bring up bicycles will be this week also, so we want to make sure everyone can come out, not everyone, but everyone who knows they're supposed to be there. And Evans High School will have the Senator Siplin and his wife's annual Christmas toy event that I normally partner with every year, me and Juan. So I do know if you signed up for that, we certainly look forward to having you there. Now to the agenda. I'm gonna vote no on B2. This is a Jacksonville company, and the reason I voted no, because by the time someone from another city gets two or three change orders, it's gonna cost just as much as a local person. So I have a just feeling, just worn out on these out-of-state or out-of-town, and I saw some out-of-state people too. And I'm gonna vote no on B5, Item 9C. Mayor, I think we just gotta go back and look at CRA for the last few years, and I like for all the council members to go back and read the original application where Paramore and downtown was a blighted area, but every community has been removed from their blight except Paramore. We're getting ready to put CRA twenty-one million dollars more in debt, even though I agree with the venues, I think to burden this agency more is never gonna get us where we need to be in Paramore. We have not gone after it aggressively, we started, and somewhere, all the venues got in the way, and we were busy going after jobs, but another twenty-one billion, twenty-one million dollars, I just don't see us paying back that kinda debt over and over and over onto CRA and taking care. Its original intent, and that was to remove the blight from Paramore. I just invite the council members to read it and not have myself being the only person to want to defend my district, that's the district now, we call it downtown, to help me with that. We really do need help, making sure we can do what we've been asked to do, and twenty-one million more in debt, CRA will be, will have to file bankruptcy, just because it's like anybody else gets too much debt. I did want to compliment Travel Click for QTI, and that's a good thing. Also, on December fourteenth, on Agenda Item C3, that was Travel Check, and I think it's D3, Shoes for Kids USA will have a giveaway at Orange County Courthouse. They did it last year, and there were just hundreds of kids out there. So December fourteenth, for those kids who need shoes, please go down to Orange County Courthouse. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyman. Move on to Commissioner Ings.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. The nineteenth annual Police Ball was just celebrated at the Rosen Center Hotel. Maria Triscari with the I Drive Resort Chamber of Commerce, and her team really put that together. Chief Paul Rooney was there on hand, as well as Sheriff Jerry Demings, and Orange County Property Appraiser Rick Singh also came by to say hello. That was a great event, very well attended. And then, of course, coming up this Saturday at 10:00 AM is the Washington Shores Community Christmas Parade in celebration, and the parade will begin at the Dr. James R. Smith Center, and we will go north on Bruton Boulevard, east on Columbia Street, ending with the celebration at Hankins Park. So, and we're also thankful for the Orlando Police Department Mobile Food Truck, they're gonna be on hand there to feed many of the people, and we're gonna have lots of vendors there as well, and lots of entries in the parade. The celebration in the park will go from 12:00 noon to about 3:00 PM, so do come out and enjoy. And I just wanted to give a tribute also, as the mayor had done, to Nelson Mandela, who passed away this past Thursday. He was ninety-five years old, and he won the Nobel Peace Prize in 1993, and in 1994 he was elected president of South Africa. And in one of his quotes, he stated, "I have cherished the ideal of a domestic, of a democratic and free society in which all persons live together in harmony with equal opportunities." And for Mandela, this was true freedom that came from forgiveness and reconciliation, and he was a man of peace and love, and he did not resort to violence to solve society's problems. And he rose above the acts of racial hatred and discrimination and retaliation after being jailed for twenty-seven years, and Mandela conquered the presidency of South Africa and the world. So it is with great sympathy that we express the loss of this great man, Nelson Mandela, and that's all I have to say, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Ings, and we will move to District One, Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. As always, I try to post past and future events in District One on our website, so I don't have anything to add. So with that, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda recognizing, recognizing Commissioner Lyman's no vote on B2 and B5.
Okay, so there's a motion by Commissioner Gray and second by Commissioner Lyman. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, that will bring us to the CRA, so we will recess the city council meeting, and we will convene the CRA. Item number one is accepting meeting minutes from the Advisory Board October the twenty-third. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Lyman. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, number two, Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Item number two today is accepting a downtown Orlando Community Redevelopment Area Plan Amendment. This proposed amendment to the Downtown Outlook Part Four is to amend the redevelopment initiatives to be undertaken by the CRA over the life of the plan to include the soccer stadium. Today's staff is simply requesting that the CRA forward the proposed plan amendment to the Municipal Planning Board for review for conformity with the comprehensive plan and to Orange County, the Downtown Development Board and the city as taxing authorities within the downtown Orlando Community Redevelopment Plan area.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Any further business come from the CRA, Thomas?
There's none, Mayor, thank you.
Then CRA will stand adjourned, we will reconvene the city council meeting, we'll move to hearings. Number one, Madam Clerk.
This is the Third Amendment to the Third amended and restated Development Order for Millenia Development of Regional Impact.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
This is an order approving rescission of the innovative, Innovation Place DRA Development Order.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Hearings ordinance, second read, number one, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida relating to alcoholic beverages, amending the city's alcoholic beverage code by providing new and amended definitions, providing amended lawful hours of service, sale, and consumption of alcoholic beverages on Sundays, providing new and amended rules of evidence in the enforcement of the alcoholic beverage code, updating terminology, definitions, and cross-references throughout the alcoholic beverages code, deleting certain regulations relating to bottle clubs, providing for new penalties and methods of enforcement for violations of certain provisions of the alcoholic beverages code, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, clarification, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter?
Good afternoon. Good to see you again. As the pastor of Harvest Baptist now for thirty-five years, as well as the president of the First Harvest Foundation, one of the ministry we have is a reformist unanimous in that we discuss how people are addicted to so many things, and I know in this world that we live in, people have political correct call a lot of things different than what the Bible calls it. So standing here representing God as well as the Bible, wine is a marker and strong drink is raging, and we have some problem in our society, and I know at the pastor of Harvest Baptist have some problem with people who drink, and I understand how people call it social drinking. But social drink can never stay social, it get worse, and get worse, and people get addicted. And because they get addicted, we have problem, and I know our police chief does a lot with dealing with people who have drank, and now the drink has taken them. So my vote, I understand that the city probably by and large will pass this, but my vote for righteousness as well as for Harvest Baptist and what I have to deal with, with people who addicted to drugs, and we don't call alcohol drug, we call it just, we give it another name. I like, I like how people change names. I mean, if it's, if it's white, I mean, it's black, we'll white strike down the middle, it's a skunk, I don't care whatever you call it, but people like to change names. So I'd just like to say, I'm against it, I know the member of Harvest Baptist is against it, I know the city gonna pass it anyway, and once again, I'm gonna put in my bid, I know, I thank the chief for putting it, doing what he's doing to get surveillance cameras, because the more we get the surveillance camera, the more protective people will feel. So thank you so much for listening to me, and I will return, thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. That's all the cards that I have. Are you putting a card in for this matter?
No.
Okay. Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida designating certain land generally located north of Hargrave Street, south of Dobear Street, east of Lake Baldwin Lane, and west of Yumahoe Boulevard comprised of about 1.16 acres as planned development district with the aircraft noise overlay district on the city's official zoning maps, providing special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida amending the city's adopted growth management plan by updating figure CI14 to be entitled City of Orlando 2013 through 2018 Capital Improvement Element Capital Improvements Fund Schedule, amending policy 2.2.30 in the capital improvements element, providing for severability and an effective date.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Let's move on to number four, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando granting Comfort House Inc., a non-exclusive franchise to provide roll-off container collection and disposal of solid waste within the City of Orlando, outlining franchisees duties and providing the terms and conditions under which such franchise shall operate, providing for severability and an effective date.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number five, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando granting Bob Randolph Trucking and Loader Service Inc., a non-exclusive franchise to provide roll-off container collection and disposal of solid waste within the City of Orlando, outlining franchisees duties and providing the terms and conditions under which such franchise shall operate, providing for severability and an effective date.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number six, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida amending Chapter 7 Procurement Code of the Code of the City of Orlando by creating Section 7.1102 Veteran Business Enterprise Preference, providing for severability, codification, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Stewart. I wanna recognize Michael Waltrip, who is the Chair of our Veterans Advisory Council for his wisdom and the participation of the Veterans Advisory Council in helping us craft this ordinance that will help veteran-owned businesses. Commissioner Stewart, and then Commissioner Ortiz.
All right, mentioned earlier, I wanna say thank you to Kevin Walsh and everybody who's involved to help us recognize Paul Hay in this small way, and it's an honor to be able to recognize his memory because of the amount of work that he did to support all the veterans throughout the community. So as I had mentioned before, I don't think an amendment would be required because it doesn't affect the action of the council, but it is a nice, a nice thing to be able to do, to recognize Paul for his work and what he means to this council and what he means to this mayor. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Stewart. Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want, I'm sorry about that. I just wanna reiterate the same thing that Commissioner Stewart mentioned, and thank you, Commissioner Stewart, for bringing Paul Hayes to, to be recognized for all his efforts. Thank you for being so involved. Thank you, our staff, David, Kevin, Walsh, and Deborah. Thank you so much for, for you guys working so hard on this ordinance, I mean, this change to our ordinance, because I know it's gonna help a lot of our veterans, and you know, there's nothing better than having those veterans coming home knowing that there's hope. So thank you so much, Mayor.
Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number seven, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to landscaping regulations, front yard vegetable gardens, tree protection, updating street tree requirements, buffer yards, landscape standards for one-family and two-family residential, landscaping standards for multifamily and commercial development, and updating the approved tree and plant list, updating Chapter 60 subdivision and landscaping by replacing Part 2 landscaping and tree protection in its entirety, amending Chapter 66 definitions, providing for severability, codification, correction of scrivener's errors, amortization of existing front and street side yard vegetable gardens, and an effective date.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Ings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Three appearance request cards, Jennifer and Jason Helviston. If you guys just wanna come up together and testify in whichever fashion you want.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Jennifer Helviston, and I would like to thank you for this opportunity to speak today. I'd also like to thank you for this proposed ordinance that will permit those who choose their grow, those who choose to grow their own food the ability to do so, no matter where the sun shines on their property. Our first code violation was served to us over a year ago. Most would have seen this as a dead end, but we saw it as an opportunity for growth. So much light has been shed on the importance of growing food because of this issue. We thank you for that. This has been a true blessing and a catalyst for our local food movement to move forward. Another blessing is how it has brought not only our community together, but it has brought so many other communities together as well. Hundreds of gardens have been planted not only here in the City of Orlando, but nationwide since this all began. The transformation has been amazing to experience. The benefit of edible gardening does not only include the obvious things such as healthy fresh food, exercise, and safety in the community, but it also brings a connection to locally grown food. Growing food brings not only the plant's roots deep into the soil, but it grounds the hearts of the gardener to their home. Historically, Orlando has been known as a transient city. I believe with the ability to work the land, people will become vested in their property and in turn vested in their city. It's difficult to leave a home and a food source they worked so hard to create. Growing food brings advancements that we will all benefit from and that we all need. One thing that I've realized through all of this is that people wanna know they still have the right to grow their own food on their own property. So I challenge all of you not to only allow us to grow our food, but to please encourage it. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council in advance for voting yes on this ordinance and for leading the food security movement. Thank you, and God bless all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jason Helviston. Thank you for bringing us again one last time to be a part of the process of this ordinance and allow us, keep us our food source. But I wanted to ask you humbly one more question that last time we spoke, and what did you plan to do to be the leader in food security and sustainability? And I was hoping that you considered that question over this past two weeks. Today, we are speaking of the sustainable future of Orlando. Please consider sustainable code writing and ordinance writing that responds to impacts and not desires in the future, and also please be the sustainable leader that the city has stated it wants to be. Responding to impacts versus can or cannot wants in code writing creates writing nuisance and impact and safety laws such as noise, odor, accessibility clearance, drainage, line of sight, and any other measurable impacts to others and the environment will create sustainable laws that are dynamic and do not need to be revisited whenever trends change. An example is our planet climate zone is, is expected to change here in the very near future. Very many of those plants in this plant list will be changed at that time. If you write the code a little bit differently, that wouldn't be needed to be revisited by you in a year or two. Everything said in this ordinance, except for a lot of the aesthetic, aesthetic requirements, can be addressed in a lot of the existing nuisance laws, impact laws, and safety laws, without telling others what they can and cannot do on their property. Responding to impacts that are all, that are always there, not what everyone might want in the future, is the best way to go about writing these. Sustainability is not a choice, it is a necessity. The current economic, social, legal, and tax systems have failed miserably on a lot of critical points. We pray for your sustainable leadership for the future of the City of Orlando. The City of Orlando has the entire world's attention right now when it comes to food. Please do not miss this extraordinary opportunity. We would like to suggest that you include in this ordinance an announcement of some type, leading sustainable effort in the food free movement. You have until March 2014, when this goes into effect, to decide what kind of food security effort you could launch in conjunction with this ordinance. Here are a few suggestions that your community has come up with. Again, the community came up with these suggestions, and a lot of your task force did too. We would like to point out also that these suggestions, most of which won't cost the city anything, you've got people in boots on the ground, you just need to kinda support it and direct it. Please review the community-based local food system graphic that I attached in the packets that were handed out to you. It was created by the community, a lot of members and the community, and there's a lot of roles that the city can play in that community-based food system. So please see where you can maybe be a part of that. Also, we'd like to point out that it's already been studies showing the, the benefits of community-based social marketing and the behavior changes that we need to see. The graphics shown in your packet also demonstrates that. We'd also like to point out another example of an incredible edible tod morden, which is a town in the University, United Kingdom, that has created locally grown food tourism. All they've done now is created a special website that shows where people are either growing food or restaurants that are using locally grown food. It could literally be an extension of the, the current buy-local campaign, just with a special platform. These are things that you can really do to show and encourage these. You can also remove the barriers to starting community gardens. The City of New York has over 500 community gardens compared to the City of Orlando's five. The City of New York is a concrete jungle. We have plenty of land. Make a commitment to at least double our community gardens by encouraging and not creating zoning barriers. We would also like you to turn portions of the select city parks into food forests. Food forest demonstrations are typically self-maintained and very little planning costs, less than annuals. Again, in your packet, and this is an example of many cities that are doing just that. It doesn't have to cost the city anything. The last one is create an urban learning farm. This could cost the city money, but I think with doing a lot of these other things, you can get the grants to cover it. It is a great demonstration of how to basically do it urban-wise, and then when people do it, it'll be more in alignment and conjunction with your aesthetics. They won't just be out there doing it on their own and trying to figure it out as they go. Plus, the city task force here at the Sustainability came up with a lot of these ideas and many more. Announce them. Let's, let's celebrate them when you roll out this ordinance. If you do not do more than just accept what was already assumed by the sustainable community, then the City of Orlando will not be viewed as a sustainable leader. Sustainable leaders, businesses, and residents will move on to somewhere else that will actually sustain in their future. That's what it means. So again, please make all the time, resources, and efforts that all of us have put into this, and do more than just allow vegetable gardens. In addition to this ordinance, do more to be a leader in food security. We are not asking you to spend money, we are asking you to be sustainable. We are also letting you know that there are plenty of people with solutions. Please help them succeed and remove any barriers to sustainability, and thank you again for all that you've done.
Thank you.
Luanne Gelsa, I chose to speak on this behalf because sustainability is so dear to my heart, but more so, I just left a meeting I was privileged to be to when it comes to the brownfield. And one thing I need everyone to, to discuss and put into this is that there are certain parts of Orlando that we need to inform the community. If you're gonna do gardening, it needs to be raised. You need to bring it up and above the ground and not to plant in the ground in certain areas. You guys know what area I'm particularly talking about, is Paramore. We do have a food desert in the Paramore community, and to have five community gardens wanting to be in the Paramore community is important. I just would like you to extend that information to the rest of the community so they don't find out if they're planting gardens, that they should not plant directly into the ground that they should raise. So I'm pleading with you in a public service announcement to let individuals in those particular communities to say, if you're gonna do gardening, raise, put it above ground. Thank you.
Is anybody else that would like to address this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, ordinances, first read, number one.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida designating certain land generally located north of Carter Street, south of Barley Street, east of Ellis Avenue, and west of Willie Mays Parkway comprised of about 38.1 acres as planned development district on the city's official zoning maps, providing special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone from the public that would testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando granting advanced disposal services, solid waste Southeast Incorporated, a non-exclusive franchise to provide roll-off container collection and disposal of solid waste within the City of Orlando, outlining franchisees duties and providing the terms and conditions under which such franchise shall operate, providing for severability and an effective date.
Move to approval. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone that would like to testify on the roll-off franchise? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida rezoning part of certain land generally located north of East Esther Street, south of East Kaylee Street, east of South Orange Avenue, and west of Delaney Avenue, and comprised of about .89 acres from R2A TSP to R3A TSP, amending the city's official zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida designating certain real property generally located north of Moss Park Road, south of State Road 528, and abutting the east side of State Road 417, and comprised of 1,266 acres, more or less, as planned development district on the city's official zoning maps, providing special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Madam Clerk, did, did you not need to read the name of the property?
No, Mayor.
Sure?
I'm positive.
I just wanted, yes?
Wa-wahootie?
We-wahootie.
We-wahootie. I wanna say wah-wah all the time. We-wahootie.
We-wahootie. That just makes you feel good to say it, doesn't it?
Just likes that word.
We-wahootie. All right, is there anyone that would like to testify on the ordinance related to the PD for We-wahootie? All right. Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. So that concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for today. Thank you for joining us in chambers. Thank you for tuning in at home.